Good morning. You're in, you are. Okay, perfect. So it is 12:02 and I would like to call this Communications Committee meeting to order. It is Wednesday, May 25th, in person. Board members in person, myself, Dora Wilson, board members online. We have Carl Jacobs. And we have incoming Superintendent Dr. Bryant in person. We also have staff members, MJ, MJ, I don't remember his last name. Thank you. We have Katie in person. We have Matt Teeford online. So thank you, everybody, for joining us. This actually, this meeting is, we have discussed, will be more of, for me, and probably Dr. Bryant, more of a listening session. So we would like to start out with a recap. Is Andy online, Katie?
Uh, no.
Andy, so. And is Margot online?
Not yet. Oh, we texted.
So at this point. So maybe start with Member Jacobs. If you are available, could you maybe share with us what you think has gone well this year? A recap from your perspective, what you think we could have improved on as far as the Communications Committee process?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I, what's gone well, I would say, since I sat in on the first Communications Committee, which I wasn't a member of, but I attended most of the meetings this time a year ago. Our online presence, engagement activity has skyrocketed. And so I really have to give our comms team, MJ and the other staff, really huge amounts of kudos for everything that's been done to make our content more frequent, more engaging. I don't formally track the metrics, but informally, I see more likes, comments, shares, retweets, which I think is great because the work is already being done by the amazing education professionals in the headquarters and at every campus around our municipality. So it's really more of just a messaging component. So I think that that's great. From a board perspective, I know that we had, you know, a pretty significant engagement plan. I think overall, the board has been very active in engaging the community, you know, any reasonable way possible. I do think that there is room for improvement, specifically connecting with particular communities and getting out and being intentional as a board with connecting with communities where they are and where they're already gathering. I also would like to see more formal attempts to engage with various stakeholder groups inside the district, like our labor organizations, making that, kind of building those bridges too. And so a lot there, I think, which is positive and hopefully we, something, some things we can continue forward for the next year.
Thank you so much, Member Jacobs. MJ, if you could share your, what you have to share about the recap, like, you've got lots to share, so.
Uh, yeah.
Important information.
Do you, Katie?
Oh, President Bellamy just joined online.
Oh, and President Bellamy has joined us online. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, thanks. I, for me, I still feel, I'm still drinking from the fire hose, you know, on it. But, you know, to Member Jacobs' point, like, we did put a hyper-focus on our social media output. And, and then we eventually were able to hire someone here within the last month. So that's gonna pick up a lot more momentum in the next couple of months. So I'm really happy to hear that feedback from there. I really, you know, for us in the last, for me, since, I would say, since September, we were just general messaging on, you know, the seasons issues. But then, you know, the special projects that come up, like, you know, school bond and some other things outside of a regular school year, you know, we were working on. But again, I didn't, for me, it was learning as, you know, as we went in, in that regard and just having those takeaways for, as we move in here for, you know, for the next year. We took a look at our board newsletter and combined that with the district's newsletter to make that one resource for the community and for the board to use for their, you know, messaging needs for each month. So that, for me, is kind of like the big one when working with this committee, is what we attempted to do in addition to building off of our, our social media platform. So that would be my, my takeaways for the recap.
Would it help if I, I do have the, kind of the outline of what the Communications Committee does in policy? Do you want me to project that?
That'd be great.
Communications Committee evaluates and recommends external communication with the public, legislature, municipality, and other interested stakeholders.
Awesome. Thank you. So in addition to the recap, wanted to do some hopes and dreams for the next calendar, or the next academic year for this committee. So maybe if we could, oh, I, President Bellamy also joined us and I didn't get her hand raised.
Yeah, she has her hand raised.
Thank, thank you. Madam Chair, for the recap piece, we did do a community engagement calendar, which, which I think we need to probably, maybe not this meeting, but the next meeting, we need to review it. We, we were, it was kind of a pilot. But I would like to make some adjustments to that community engagement calendar. Basically, it, it plugs in community, not so much activities, but opportunities for the board to engage with the community. And not always as an entire board, but as individuals on the board. So I would like to, I don't have a copy of it handy today, but I have been following, trying to follow that, that calendar. And we were doing really good until all kinds of other things kind of popped up that were unexpected. But I would like to bring that before the committee, maybe not this today, but in the future. Because I think that's a great, I think we can, we can meet some of our goals, or not, not, not necessarily our academic goals, but some of our community goals by making sure that we review that and make adjustments, which is the intent for the next school year. Thank you.
No, thank you for that. I appreciate it. So hopes and dreams for the next academic year. President Bellamy, do you want to start with what you would like to see? If you had a wish list for the Communications Committee, what would that would look like?
Took my mic, mic off. So, you know, I think I'm, I'm really, you know, my focus really is making sure we have, we began thinking about our legislative priorities early enough. And I know, I know that it seems like it's, it's really early. And maybe it is, but those legislative priorities and how we, you know, get input from everybody. I think we should start that probably sometime in September. To keep, but keep, our schedule is usually to do that in, have them ready to go, to be rolled out in, in, in December, along with the legislative event that we sponsor. And I would want to see that event sponsored again. I guess I'm not sure of the board's capacity to do, to, you know, I would like to see the board join the administration in certain public activities. I'm not against having our own, but our, we don't have the capacity as, as much as our staff would. So I would like to see more collaboration and maybe just, you know, pick maybe six events that we want to partner on, four to six events, and try to figure out how to make that as successful as possible. I, I just, because I want that, for me, it should be a united effort, not a divided effort when we are, you know, when we are engaging with the community. I think, so I would like to see more of that, as well as implementing our engagement calendar when we review it. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you for that input. I appreciate it. Member Jacobs, do you have a hopes and dreams list for the Communications Committee?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. I know you and I had offline discussed being more present as a board and organized for kind of larger and more pre-planned community events. I think I share that desire and appreciate your experience and expertise in the area. I also would like to see more coordination, which I think can and should take place within this committee structure, to send messaging that could be developed in advance to elected officials, the local and state level. I think the example, which I may have discussed with you, Madam Chair, is op-eds that could happen monthly, bimonthly, through the committee that other board members could sign on if they so chose. But messaging that doesn't need to be done on a, an urgent or immediate basis. I think President Bellamy and I have a system that seems to be working. I defer to her, I guess, if she feels differently. But for kind of the, the last second, immediate communications that needed to happen, unless things were changing in June or on the recent assembly votes for funding, but more, more pre-planned, something we could, you know, calendar out as part of our community engagement calendar, I think, would be good. And I'll, I'll leave it, what I guess, the, the other thing that I'll reiterate is being intentional about creating spaces for the board to interact with staff. You know, I had been asked about some sort of event with one of our bargaining units that, and was asked outright why the board chose not to engage. And it sounded like through, you know, a series of follow-up conversations, that there was a miscommunication. And so creating those pathways for engagement with our various partner entities within the district, I think, would be great and making sure that there's space for us to engage as a group if we can, and then, you know, in addition to the work that we're doing individually. So just all those are ideas I've kind of got floating, you know, pins I've got on the board, some things we might be able to look at over the next year.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. Appreciate you, but that's awesome. Dr. Bryant, I don't want to put you on the spot because I know this is primarily a listening session for you, but for, for the hopes and dreams, if there's anything, any feedback you want to give at this point, happy to listen.
Uh, no, I agree with many of the sentiments that were shared. I think what I'm really thinking about is I'm really excited to introduce myself to the community. So that's something that's on my mind personally, of course. But then also just making sure that the public is aware of the impact of some of the new legislation that may be passed at the reading, though, financial transparency or things like Esther. I'm just wondering, how do we make the community aware and get them excited about what's coming? That's where my head's at.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Hopes and dreams. Oh, I'm sorry. Was somebody online?
Oh, no, I'll wait till MJ goes. Sorry.
Thanks, Margot. No, for me, I would just wanted to continue to build off of what we already started in the last year. And to Member Jacobs' point, I would say to really work on that board voice and identifying those spaces where the board has an opportunity to message outside of sort of general district things to just support the board in those areas. Member Jacobs did touch, you know, the example of, you know, funding and those funding sources when appropriate to engage in those topics publicly and, and having that strategic understanding of, you know, how we do that from, you know, the board level versus the district level. So, and then just building, like I said, and just building off of what we already sort of started, you know, these past, you know, eight months, you know.
So one, and going back to MJ, I know you have a plan for introducing the Superintendent Dr. Bryant to the community. Did you, are you able to share that plan today? Or, I mean, he's been, he's been popping up all over the place lately. But did you have a more formal plan in place?
No, we don't have, we, nothing has been set. So I can, if you don't mind, Dr. Bryant, I can, I connected with Dr. Bryant last Friday and had an opportunity to give just a real surfacey overview of, of the Communications and Outreach Team for the district. And then left it at, you know, after Memorial Day to huddle up with him and really discuss and start to brainstorm on what the, that rollout really does, you know, look like come July 1st. You know, so I'll, I'll, I'll say this, a part of that conversation with Dr. Bryant's is going to be to talk about where we are as Alaskans in July and, and, you know, where the capacity is for our community to absorb information during the month of July. And, and looking ahead to, you know, being a little more strategic. And maybe August is, you know, a smarter time to look at doing some things. But, you know, that's all comes down to just having that conversation around strategy and, you know, what's the best options for us to maximize our saturation message with, or saturating our message, you know, in the community and what their capacity is in July versus August. So it's a little nerdy, right? That's just a little nerd moment for me, but that's kind of where my head's at. But I wanted to get through Memorial Day, let's get into June. And, and then, you know, Dr. Bryant and I can kind of work on that. But I just, you know, my recommendation is not to do anything more than what we've done until Dr. Bryant takes over officially July 1st.
Got it. Okay, thank you for that. The, the only other thing, comment I have is to thank MJ, the Communication Staff, and of course, the fabulous Katie for all of the last minute press releases and edits and talking points. I just want you to know, I appreciate it. It really helps to have more than my eyes in my thoughts. And as well as Member Jacobs, he's like the mastermind of all the, all the political kind of things. But I really want you guys to know that I appreciate it. And even if I don't take your, your words, I do take them to heart if I don't use them on the paper. So, but thank you so much.
You hear us. You hear us. Yes, I hear you. What I do with that information is something else. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Margot. So.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Member Holloman, it may be on your list, but Member Holloman for hopes and dreams, he had a onboarding, Katie, what did, what did he call that? Onbo, help me out, guys.
Well, he was, he was working on a, like an onboarding manual.
Okay.
Working, yeah. It wasn't Google Docs that he was talking about working in, but something where board members, especially since there's so many new, could, you know, give input on what would be, what was most helpful, what they needed more of, and putting together kind of a manual that knew, we could use to onboard new people coming on.
Okay, that was, that was on the hopes and dreams list.
That he would, he indicated that he was going to start that. I don't know if, if he has put the documents in place or what he's done yet, but.
Okay, so I'll check in with, yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, that, that would be good. And, and, and I think we, we have bits and pieces of, of it already. We just need to get all the pieces in place before Katie leaves.
Right, I do have, well, I'm not going very far. I do, which was the plan.
I love you for that.
I do have, I do have quite a bit in a folder on my computer. Because when you guys came on, there was, you know, the things you need to know and, and all those. And we worked with the committee to kind of put all those together. But put them in a digital, digital file where people can access it easily.
Okay.
And, and Madam Chair, I seen Mr. Teeford's in the room. I don't know if he, if he's just hanging out with us today or if he had a.
My apologies.
I am.
All I see on the screen in front of me is us.
Their video's on, right?
There we go.
There he is.
Thank, thank you for the opportunity. I, I am mostly just here to listen. I don't, I don't have anything to add at this time to the conversation, but thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for joining us. So beyond that, I mean, most of it was just, the intent of this meeting was the recap was kind of listening into hopes and dreams. And is there any new business that you would like to have added to our future agenda?
Well, I will add, just in terms of communications, Dr. Bishop is working on a message to families and staff today in reference to the horrific situation that occurred in Texas yesterday.
Great.
I was very sad.
Madam Chair, could I have the floor for just a minute?
Please.
Uh, yeah, and so I guess I, I, we went around the room, but I don't think we heard from you specifically. And I'm very interested in your perspective as chair as to what you see, you know, the committee being useful for what changes we might be able to implement. And so hearing your voice in the conversation would also be appreciated.
No, thank you. I was trying to take this opportunity to listen and of course, I'm happy to share. I've talked with MJ, as, as well as I think most of the board members at this point, that for the most part, Member Jacobs and President Bellamy have, or excuse me, Vice President Jacobs, President Bellamy have articulated of the importance of collaborating with our departments that are already doing outreach, improving our outreach as a board. I really, for me, it's, outreach is really near and dear to me. And it's really important that we have as many opportunities at least to engage with our stakeholders, engage with our community members, our students. And so to have that in a more, I guess, refined list of what opportunities are out there, what, what our staff is doing, what our departments are doing in regards to outreach. I'm, I'm really curious to hear what's already going on. How can we improve that or how can we engage with, with our staff as board members and our community members? So in, in regards to trying to figure out what is, what the district is already doing is, is important to me to find out. And I can work, force with Dr. Bryant and MJ to, to do some of that, that research. And then how the board can engage, how the opportunities we have to do the outreach. So that's, that's where I come from. I, I know the communications portion of it is extremely important. I know MJ is very skilled at that. I know Dr. Bryant is also really tuned into the communication aspect of it. So I would like to see our outreach aspect improved and also have the opportunity to share with, in these meetings as well as, as other meetings, the great things our staff is doing, just continue to repeat it. I know our board connect, I really appreciate that you guys changed that format. I use that often to structure how I report to our Community Council meetings. So just the more we can get out the positive things that our staff is doing, that our kids are doing, the better.
There's the one answer here.
Yes, please.
I just, last year we did, we had a booth at Juneteenth. I'm wondering, I think we joined specially, I'm not sure, are we doing that this year? And that's going to be like in two weeks, but, so I don't, I don't really know who, if the district is doing anything.
I, I will circle back to Sonia, I, because I believe she is taking the lead on Juneteenth.
Okay.
I remember an email thread, I think, last month. And so I'll, I'll circle back to her and then I'll follow up with, do I say Member Wilson or is it Madam Chair?
Dora.
That, there, there you go. I'll circle back, I'll circle back to Dora.
Okay, that, that would be, that would be great. And if, because I know last year, I think all board members showed up at some point or another to assist with the table. And if, if that happens again, Katie, we'll, we should put it on the calendar as, as an event. Because we, we kind of monitored ourselves last time, but.
This, this wasn't the one that's occurring on the 10th and 11th, is it? Or on the 10th, 11th?
Oh, whoa, it might be.
It's with the retreat.
It would conflict with our retreat. Okay, all right.
Are you, are we, are we wondering if we are or not? I can do a quick Google.
I would like to know if the district is going to participate and then.
Are we looking to confirm the date of, of?
Of Juneteenth. I think it, I think, I think it's, that's a health fair, I think, on the 10th and 11th.
So Juneteenth officially is the 19th.
Right.
The, the memo, or the email that came from Celeste Groudon is for Juneteenth, says it's Saturday, June 11th.
So they're going in.
Is it for Juneteenth or? Is it the?
You're right. I'm sorry. It's the Juneteenth by buck health fair.
All right, so that, I'm sorry, I'm not interested in that one.
Okay, yep, sorry.
There should be another one.
Madam, Madam Chair, I agree. I'm looking at the Facebook event. It looks like it's on the 18th and 19th from 1:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. That's the one, that's the one, MJ.
One to six, and it looks like, yeah, one to six, both days.
One to six both days, okay.
Yep.
I'll get it on the calendar.
Did it show the location?
I think it's the.
Delaying.
It's the, it's the Park Strip.
Correct, yeah, but it's usually right in the middle of the Park Strip.
The health fair is also.
Yeah. It's the health fair.
Yep, okay.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for remembering Juneteenth, since it's coming up very quickly. Um, you know, the other thing is, is I had a conversation, and this would be a conversation that we'd want to have as, as a committee, of course, but I did recently have a conversation with one of our legislators who asked if, actually it was in regards to the red act, if the board had taken a stance on that. And I don't believe we did, so I'm just curious to see, and, and this can be future conversation, how the board would want to move forward regarding educational legislation if we would want to take a stance. My question to them specifically was, would it have made a difference if we did write a letter in support? And the response was absolutely, because. Needs in the education. So anyways, that was a conversation I had.
That's an interesting comment. The interesting thing is, we've been testifying and writing all spring in support of that legislation. So Kelly, Michelle, Carl, I know, and we've been, so we've been writing in, in support of that. So.
But individually, correct? Not as a board?
I'm trying to remember, because we've done both, I think. I have to go back and look. I mean, I wasn't tracking it as a.
Remember doing one as a board.
I don't think we put together anything that had everyone's names and or signatures that I was in charge of.
Okay.
And then Member Jacobs has. Remember Jacobs has his hand up.
Member Jacobs?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So I guess to clarify there, I mean, we're talking about a, a pretty complex issue, I think. So what we tested, what I saw members testify or heard and members testify in favor of was SB 111. The, what finally passed, I believe, was the House version of the bill, which actually included multiple pieces of legislation. And it was kind of a, like a Frankenstein piece of legislation. So what, what was originally testified earlier in the session two was very different than what eventually got passed. And there were additional factors in there. The original version of SB 111, to the best of my knowledge, didn't contain a BSA increase. And so I think that members testified in support of SB 111 while at the same time supporting House Bill 272 and 273, which addressed that. And so there were some members of the House when they debated on concurring with what the Senate did, who were concerned that, you know, with, with certain elements of the, the new piece of legislation. And so I think we probably should be more cognizant of, and I don't know what more could have been done because that was, I mean, that all happened within a 48-hour period, I think. But that's, that's kind of the background there as I see it. As this wasn't just a, a bill that went from one house to the other, got passed and then got sent to the governor's desk. This was, this was a pretty complex situation.
No, thank you, Member Jacobs.
I mean, I'm not against writing a letter, but, you know.
I understand that things change quickly.
Actually, I'm glad this legislative session is over. It has worn me down.
Is it really forever?
So new business, any additional new business? I know MJ, thank you for sharing.
No, I, for me, I'm good. I'm just, you know, looking forward to, you know, the next chapter and seeing where we go and building off of what we already started. So I'm, I'm excited.
Me too.
Member Jacobs.
Member Jacobs.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. So I, I guess to follow up on a point that President Bellamy made. I know staff have been increasingly involved and, which I appreciate as well, helping us, you know, utilize our voice more. And I think that there was some conversation, I don't know, within, over the past year, as to the staff being available, workloads, things of that nature. Do staff have, is there appropriate staff time in the day to accomplish the communications team core mission and be available to assist President Bellamy and I, as well as the communications team in, in utilizing our voices aboard? Are we comfortable with the human capital we have at this point?
That's a MJ question.
That is not what I was going to answer.
Yeah. All right. So you're, are you, like, do we have the capacity to, to, to do what we're wanting to do? Or do we need more resources?
Yes. Yeah, that's essentially my question is are we good supporting this committee, President Bellamy and I, as well as accomplishing your, your day-to-day responsibilities?
You know, I think that we, that's just something that we just need to continue to explore. You know, it's new territory. We're building and growing in that direction. So I think, you know, I can't answer the question because we're not in that rhythm yet. We're still working and, and building off of what we already have. So I, to, you know, I think we take it as, as we go and we'll do our best, you know, to do it and add. But I feel like this leads into that conversation, that topic that we, I think we came up at some point on, you know, do you, does, does the board want it? Does the board want its own communications resource? You know, and that, you know, there. So, but I'm happy to explore that further and, and go down that path. But, you know, I, I can't say that we can't do it because this is all, we're growing in that. And then I'd rather work with what we got and then circle back to say, okay, you know, we're, our shoes are getting a little tight. We may need to go up a size more.
Yeah.
Thank you, MJ. That helps. And yeah, that's, I, I hope that that's something you just keep in the back of your mind is to continue to evaluate. I'm sure we'll do the same. And again, I appreciate everything you and your team are doing.
Thanks. Yeah, I think I'm tracking, I'm, I'm tracking you for sure. But I, I'd say let's, let's rock and roll and, and I'll definitely keep you connected to how tight the shoes get.
I do have to say, Dr. Bryant, that you are inheriting an amazing communication team.
Oh, I know.
The, I was telling MJ in the prior conversation that the publications, I mean visually, everything looks amazing. I compare it to publications that come out of other districts. I'm like, wow, we're very lucky.
Yeah, it's good.
Great folks working here.
Yeah, super talented.
Yes.
I just, I just have a good team, you know, so it's all them. I just, I just keep them organized, I hope.
I think you do a little more than that, but.
Madam Chair, a, a question?
Yes, please.
So are, did you, did you want a letter in support of the Alaska REEDS Act? Is that what I heard?
No, you did not hear that. I, I was just putting out as food for thought for the next legislative session as to how, if, if the board wants to, how the board wants to engage legislatively, either, you know, individually testifying, which of course we'll continue to do, but if the board as, as an entity wants to keep in mind, if there's educational legislation that is up, that is going through the process, how we want to engage in that. So not, not currently, no.
Okay. Thank you.
I was just going with hopes and dreams, food for thought. That, that's, that's pretty much it for.
Okay.
And so I'll go through the room. Please raise your hand if you're online or in person. If, if there's anything else that you would like to share before we move on to scheduling, making sure that we understand when our next meetings are scheduled. Okay. So we have a meeting scheduled for June 22nd. I will be out of town. My inclination is to cancel that meetings because we're moving into summer, unless there's any objection to that.
And it's common for the committees not to meet in June or July.
Okay. Perfect. And then for August, the August meeting is currently scheduled for August 24th, which Katie has graciously scheduled this out for the next academic year. The only question to that is, the thought was, MJ and I were talking before the meeting and the thought is for the August meeting to have that at the beginning of the month. So that the communications department has the opportunity to share the rollout for the back to school. So we have all of that information coming out. So the exception, we'll keep the meetings after that scheduled as planned, but does anybody have any objection or any conflict with changing it to Wednesday, August 3rd at noon? Just so we can hear from our communications team before school starts. Perfect. So we'll schedule the, our next meeting. So our June meeting will be canceled. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, August 3rd at noon.
Send me an update now. And we cancel it. June 22nd will be canceled.
Correct.
I just got an alert.
So Wednesday, August 3rd, and then we'll plan for future meetings to be as, as currently scheduled. And that's all I have, unless anybody else has anything to add. I just need a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, I motioned to adjourn.
Thank you, Member Jacobs. I appreciate it. Number 10 seconds, we are done.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.